All right, we're going to continue our discussion, the discussion, the discussion on the approval of the harbor fees. And any comments before the harbor fees?
No, so the only comment I can make is that, again, you know, the harbor committee does a great job at keeping tabs on what's happening in similar coastal harbor towns in mid-coast Maine and further down east. And I completely follow, I would recommend the board follow their recommendations to keep our harbor fees unchanged.
Any comments or questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the harbor fee schedule as proposed in the for 2023, as proposed by the harbor committee, which remains the same compared to 2022.
I'll make a second.
Motion made in second, do we have any comments or discussions or? Not hearing any, all is a thing. Officer, thank you very much.
Josh is here, is there anything you want to add or no?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Josh. And thank you, Harbor Committee.
The last item on our action list is a consideration of new application for a harbor and peddler's license on a public landing. And I believe probably you veterans intro. Bring us some, bring us some history.
Certainly, so. This is a resolvent ordinance amendment that was made a few years back to allow for, you know, vendors who don't have a fixed location necessarily to be able to apply to sell goods on town property. And I believe we've only had two of these come before, this will be the second one that's come in front of the select board. And Mark Bradstreet here submitted this request and I believe Mark can talk about what he currently does and what he's asking to do. So, Mark, you'd like to come up and explain your application to everyone?
I had to look up, talk and edit.
Really?
But yeah, of course, I mean, do you think it's, these are words in these lines?
This is more like a colonial term.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you know, you've been here this long, your magazines aren't here to you anymore.
Nothing in the trench.
Could you introduce yourself, please? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, good evening, I'm Mark Bradstreet, local lobsterman here as well as taxi driver. And I recognize you, taking the pasties around, these are visual aids. Rather than fill your head with words, I think if you look at the photos, you'll get a good idea. If you don't know what happens at the Fisherman Dock during lobster sale season, these photos hopefully will give you a good idea of what happens. I brought some signage that I use and I've used for the past seven years to sell lobsters directly from the Fisherman's Dock. And the reason I brought this application before you is so that I can sell them at parking lot level. Generally, we're at the boat level, which means we're moving with the tide. We have many customers that would prefer that we're at the parking lot levels, particularly the elderly. And so when I raised the issue for the harbor master, he was kind enough to direct me to write up a little synopsis and then work with the town manager to see what was needed and it falls within, I guess, the hawkers and peddlers license.
Correct.
And if you've reviewed the application, then I think you know what I'm asking for. If you haven't, I'd be glad to go over that or answer any questions you have.
Well, maybe just to fill up the public education, where does this stand and what it's going to be physically, where it's going to be physically? That would be very helpful.
Yeah, sure, it would be a temporary structure, but it would survive overnight, meaning it would stay there overnight. Physically, it'd be located near the utility box by the hoist, which is a little bit of a gray zone. If you're managing every square foot of that area, it's half in, almost in a parking area and almost on the barboard walk, but it does not infringe the parking and it does not infringe with the boardwalk and the traffic on the boardwalk. Roughly four by four, about the size of this podium. It would be a sign on the top and either a table or a chest refrigerator, which serves as a table. Refrigerator, because it would have lobsters inside. There would be two posts on the side, but otherwise it would be transparent, you'd be able to see through it and wouldn't block any of the harbor view. The idea there is that's where everybody seems to end up when they want to buy lobsters because they're looking at what we're doing at the Fisherman's Dock. So the person working here could sell to the boardwalk. They could sell to little old ladies that come through for a drive-through, which believe it or not has been very popular, particularly during the pandemic. They pull right up, lobsters go in when he comes out and they're happy. It also keeps the people that shouldn't be walking up and down the gangway at low tide, you know, from walking up and down. So we're trying to keep track of that as well. So that, that was my vision, I tried to convey that in the letter to the town manager and in the wording of the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could you close, help the other one down?
So, does it, does it? But is it on one of the fishermen's parking spot?
No, it is not.
So I have a hard time seeing it, I just, because I see the horse, I see the fishermen's parking and I just don't understand how it's both on the boardwalk and on the parking lot. I think I have to go check to go.
Well, I don't think it's on the parking lot.
So I don't understand where it is exactly.
Yeah, I can help you with that.
That's important. Yeah, if you can, I was, I mean, useful.
So Sophie, the, the hoist is here.
Yeah.
And between the hoist and the utility box that serves as the hoist.
Right.
The boardwalk passes through.
Right.
There are two electric block boxes, one of them is like, is electric box that comes up and has conduit.
Right.
And right next to that, there's an aluminum or stainless steel utility box. Immediately adjacent to that is where I would locate.
So not blocking access to those utility boxes either?
Not blocking the utility boxes and it's impossible to park where I wouldn't because the bumper would hit the utility box.
Not good.
And the sign that says fisherman parking only. Most of the time, that area, and Steve, I think, could help me with that, seems to be covered with items that are in transit from the hoist. Boar and stuff.
Lobster, lobster traps, things like that.
Specifically Barney Appleton straps. Uh, but yeah, items that are transitioned, whether they're boarings, uh, yeah, or stuff that's coming in from the islands. So, and if you'd like a detailed plan, I'd be happy to sketch one out for you and submit that with the application.
Well, I think, I think, I think it's a very, very good idea to lay it out so it's knowing. No questions or confusion about where we're putting this. I guess very important, it's probably the most important. We, not just FYI, I think, especially approved to board members, we have had applications for other hawkers.
Yes.
At the landing and in the past, we have refused that hawkers license because of issues like where we're going to put it, where it's going to take away our parking space and all. And, and also when you open the door to starting something, you've got to be consistent, you can't be safer. But this is the area pretty well defined there, Allison, right?
Thank you, Allison. The hoist.
Yeah.
Electrical box and conduit and the utility box that services the hydraulics. So underneath these letters, you could slide one way or the other.
It came with a BTH.
Hold on, let me check the, not on either.
The layer, hopefully you can take the layer.
Go ahead. There's a small utility box that is right there and there's an electric box there. Right here is what I envision a four by four area that would not impede boardwalk traffic and would not take any parking space right there. I said.
Okay.
And so once again, it's up for discussion, that's just the idea we have at this point. And it seems to be convenient because most people like to pull up here and get the view. And when they do, now they're coming to buy lobsters, that's usually the only open space there is to kind of pull in in the summertime because there's no parking there.
I guess, just to point out a kind of difference between this and, you know, other parking and peddling licenses that we receive. Mark's already down there selling, selling these off the dock. So it's, yeah, I think for him, it's more about noticing that he, he has customers that are having difficulty getting to him. He's just trying to make it, I think, a bit safer and more convenient.
Totally agree, I think he also, that's the area, those parking spaces are chasing art for the fishermen. So that's, we're not, quote unquote, anyway, we're not taking away these parking spaces per se, or causing a concern with people pulling it in and out of line, grab a couple of lobster, pull out, not staying there, that, that's a good, that's also different from before, other before we're considering losing parking space or two for a harbor peddler's thinking of coming here at that time. It's a totally different situation.
So, um, I spend a lot of time down there, love it, down there, all pictures are exactly as, as it really is. I, I mean, I su- I support things like that being able to happen. And I would hope that there's some kind of a solution, but I think also along the lines of what we've done in the past, which is um, basically being like deer in headlights when anybody asks to do something down there. Because there is just, there is so much competition for place. I mean, every, every time I'm down there, somebody who I know or who I don't know approaches me with what should or shouldn't be there. And everything from bike racks to water fountains to touch tanks, that, that was actually maybe going to happen. I was kind of thinking, I don't know if you've ever talked to the touch tank people, but it's an way to combine, that it's not supposed to be a touch tank, it's supposed to be a holding tank for for the animals to go in the touch tank. But, um, I mean, it does kind of seem like there's a lot of competition for loading and unloading space even, and we've talked about reconfiguring that. So I would hesitate to do something without it being, I hate it when people say this, but without it being part of a larger plan or a better process for, you know, Courtney wanted to do a popcorn thing there and there were a lot of reasons why, I think a lot of people would like to have popcorn down there, but we said no, because we didn't have any way of, of letting people, you know, determining how much space is available for vendors now. I think that there are other pockets of space potentially available down the public landing, like either Chamber of Commerce, you know, that's another thing that needs to come up that, which town forgets that we own that building and it's probably going to need some maintenance and probably going to need an agreement. So, I mean, I don't, I don't want to just say no, just say no, but it does seem like, I mean, the hoist, is that? How is that not going to interfere with the use of the hoist?
The hoist, for all intents and purposes, operates pretty much a hundred and eighty degree swing. And that hundred and eighty degree swing is not in the, in the realm of where this would be physically located. In fact, I'm the only one that uses it in two hundred and seventy degrees, that's because I don't like to move my truck twice. I just park it where this would be and I swing the hoist, normally the hoist goes from the boat to the loading zone.
Right.
But I park my truck over there in the winter time and I just swing the hoist and the crates go directly in my truck. If that were to happen during the summer, that would be overhead of where these lobsters would be sold and so that would be a problem. But Steve has a mechanism where you put a rope across and says danger hoist in use. And over here, we put pylons and while we're working, we tell people, you know, a way to be safe. I've never seen it be used in more than a hundred and eighty degree fashion, except for myself in the winter time. I'm not saying it hasn't been, maybe some sailboats do some things that I don't know about, but.
Tom, how many commercial fishermen do we have that use the fishermen's water?
I think you have maybe eleven permities with parking permits, I think there are eight spaces and practically speaking, I think there are five fishermen and I think there are three of them that are serious fishermen.
Are you, do any of the other fishermen sell their catch there?
They, they have not, to my knowledge, and when I talked to Toby about it, he said, oh, I don't sell lobsters anyway. I said, well, it looks like Cuzzies is coming over and getting lobsters. Oh yeah, I sell to Cuzzies, so sometimes we don't even know what we're doing.
Sure.
How he does it is he just leaves them in the water, a chef from Cuzzies hauls them up and there is no, there is no retail transaction. So, but no, I don't think so.
So when they bring their catch in or they bring, or they're loading or unloading their boats, do they use the area if you intend to set up?
Now, where I'm set up, but they do use the hoist area.
And we got many feedback from any of the commercial fishing, other commercial fishermen about this being in that area.
No, it's not, and it's not just them that uses the hoist.
Yeah, we, 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 we probably mentioned them and no one seemed to care, this thing was going to be a problem.
I guess the term question, I had to say it one time, great to have a full scope there, but what happens to us when another lobsterman sees this is successful and wants to do the same thing? That's my concern.
Yeah. I mean, that's up to you guys to.
It's like, thank you. I like the idea, I, I mean, I, I like the idea, I think it's, it's good to have fishermen in the harbor, I think it's, it's that, I think people love to see it, tourists and what it's like. It would be my suggestion that we do it for a year and see how it works.
Yeah.
License is for your area, isn't it, huh?
Yep.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I was, I, I like the idea of making provisional also, watch this for a year and, and see how it works. And also inviting people to other people, we use the hoist to give us feedback on how it's working. But I'm, I'm going to assume that if somebody loses their hose, you're not going to be in their way or you seem to be pretty cooperative, so I hope that you remain the same. If we, if we don't say yes to this, we're going to keep on selling your lobster by putting, people might go down their gangway at low tide. And so I think by allowing to test this new format for a year, at least we're preserving people's safety, especially people with mobility issues, so I'm all for this. But I, and I also believe that we should be thinking further along the lines of what Allison was saying, that how does it fit into the public landing usage? But we're not going to have a public landing usage plan in the next six months, I don't think so, so I wouldn't want to preview, you know, to stop you from trying this while we still think about the coverage. So my recommendation follows terms is to do the shot.
The license is approved by the board would be at your license, so it would be for the, on my summer, obviously, there in December, but, um, so.
I thought this was just like a pre-discussion about an actual.
It's an action.
Isn't this, is that a tank, what kind of tank?
No, there's no tank, no.
No, no tag, we do save the lobsters at the Fisherman's Dock.
Yeah.
That's where they're kept, uh, when they're not in the tank on the boat. The refrigerator table that I described would contain perhaps a crate of lobsters. And so that would come up from the water periodically. Let's say this is open from twelve to four. So if you sell two or three crates of lobsters, you're going to go get another crate at some point. So it, it's in the refrigerator and that way they're handy for the people that, that want to buy them there. I didn't mean to misrepresent, there will still be people who want the boat experience, what you see in the pictures. They want to come down, they want to talk to the fishermen, they want to see the lobsters, they want to buy the lobster.
Sure.
So they would be in a refrigerator chest. And my idea is it looks like an old Coca-Cola dispensing. Uh, you ever see the red ones that have the glass?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it slides open, you can put a crate in there, you can pick the crate out. And so when somebody wants six lobsters real quick, you just slide the door open, six lobsters on the scale they go and, and on their way they go.
And to be plugged in to the outlet there?
Absolutely.
So now that's something to be available and then there's the power, there's going to be. I mean, I, I love what you do down there, love all the activity and not trying to be difficult at all, but I just also see how much activity is down there and people trying to plug things in and, um, you know, the, it, it feels a little bit like we're, we're running the day sailors through this like really, um, you know, intense process of, um, vying for space and this and that and where they can put things and where they can and getting them off. We just did all this stuff to get them off the boardwalk so that people could have more room, the boardwalk itself is in difficult condition. I'm a little worried that this is going to turn into something where we say yes and it's becomes, I don't know, just difficult to justify, there's going to be the power, it's going to, just that's going to be an expense to the town.
I appreciate how thorough you guys are, I, I really underestimated how hard your job is because you may not have enough information to make the decision, but I just paid eight hundred dollars to park my boat this winter and it's plugged in right now. So I'm using power, if you want to assess a fee, that's your prerogative, fifty dollars for the application probably won't cover the electricity.
No. No, I, I think the license will, is, is approved here first, I'll be fair, there are certain issues which could kill next year, not least which I mentioned, I think, is the fishermen, other lobstermen saying, hey, this is, I want to do a two, we could have three or four, but that's not going to work.
Well, I can tell you, there's one less lobster next year and that's my son, he sold his boat.
Okay.
I could also tell you Toby took his gear out in August and he's a serious fisherman, so we didn't see him for half of the year.
Like I said, I don't, I don't know that and I don't really want to, but I'm just making caution.
I am still a little confused on, you say here that it's a temporary quaint stand or shack composed of a chest refrigerator. I still, I personally would like to see a little bit more of a diagram of sorts, how it's going to set up. I didn't think about the cords being run across the walkway that people were going to be using and things like that.
In this case, the cord will not be across the walkway.
Okay, there's an outlet right there.
But unfortunately, right now, the cord is threaded below the concrete to cross the walkway to get to my boat, which I paid for winter dockage. There's no trip hazard there, but the way I would situate this, the way I described it, the cord would not be in the parking area or not be on the boardwalk, it would be threaded through the electrical boxes. But I understand, I understand your request and if you want a detailed back.
What we could do is, I can give you, there's no reason to be selling lobster right in that moment on the, for the boardwalk area. And we could, we could, uh, table this, I didn't bring up which, next name is changing for the background. And with it, sort of have a more substantive sketch of the area, so we're going to be sure, rather than having to, I think I have a good feeling, I've seen it before, but that's not good for everybody and I don't want to make a decision on, on just myself because I think I know, we should, we should know, so I think we should table it and have a sketch brought back to us and give it.
Yeah, I'll probably be going down to get this, so you said that it's going to be a four by four?
Roughly, roughly, I, I'll, I'll diagram everything out.
That'd be great.
I thought about locking up in, in my garage, taking a picture of it, but I really thought maybe you need dimensions, you might need more information, I'll get that information for you.
That's, that's perfect, and we have the time, so let's not try to rush at it. So with that, I'm entertaining motion to table this or date certain, to January third, when we would have more.
Just before you vote, just in case I'm not here in January, there are two things, I think you should, when you approve the license, if you do do that, make sure this is provision, uh, says that it's subject to the oversight of the harbor master for any public health safety issues as well as the commercial fishermen, because he may have to shut it down for a few hours or whatever, but will temporarily relocate it. And that's sort of what the harbor master does on the water as well as there, so I would say that would be one condition. And the second would be, just be specific in terms of what you're approving for signage, in terms of the dimension, location, whether it's illuminated or not. You're supposed to get into a little bit of detail there, I don't think anybody wants to be surprised when there's a four by eight foot sign up there instead of.
The current one that goes on my truck is actually bigger than both of these, so that's a good point. The signage by Adventure Advertisers that I have, many of you have probably seen it, and it's a six foot sign, two by six.
Yeah.
So it's pretty substantial, but it would match the, the post on the refrigerator.
Certain elements of signage we do, not least the lighting and the elements are, we have a very specific signage orders and we should be able to see and, and understand what signage is being specifically proposed.
I would also like to see a plug-in meter, just to monitor electricity usage.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a provision to, for reimbursing the town, I can give you just simple little device.
Because, um, because I have a motion to table the site and for date certain to January third.
Second.
Want to make the second for discussion, both in favor, thank you for your flexibility.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for consideration. Thank you very much.
As we move on to the next item, item five, which is an update on the land use violation at three Metcalf Street. The first, obviously, because it's been, but they've been ready, it will gather the purpose of view for the town in this area. Audrey, Bill, you want to take the charge and lead us here?
So Jeremy, I believe, is
Okay.
Going to, um, join us on Zoom. And I guess, just to set it up at the beginning, I just want to be really clear that this is a process, it's a process discussion.
Hold on one second, yeah, we have audio issues, live streaming, so if you can limit your conversations in here, it will help the people who are listening or trying to listen, quality of, of experience, please, sorry about that, sorry.
It's okay, so this is a process discussion only and, um, you know, Bill and Jeremy can answer questions in regards to the, the process that would be at, will be forward. Jeremy?
Okay, here it is.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? Uh-oh.
Uh-huh, see?
That's not me, that's you.
Can you hear us, Jeremy?
I can hear you.
We have to speak loudly because of the owl.
Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, like Audrey said, this is really a process thing right now on where we are, as you know, we did, um, sent a notice of violation and there is due process, you know, the affected property owner has due process rights here. Um, we sent a notice of violation consistent with our, um, with the town code. We had not heard anything yet until actually today or yesterday afternoon, I got a voicemail from a, uh, some attorneys representing, um, the bonds. Um, and Bill, Kelly and I are meeting with, um, those attorneys tomorrow in a conference call um, to discuss the notice of violation, they've requested some additional information. Um, we are now, our correspondence is strictly between us and the law firm right now, uh, moving forward. Um, they've requested some information and we're going to have a conversation with them tomorrow about what the notice of violation said and what the order was, if you recall, there was a, um, we ordered them to provide information within five days on who applied, um, the herbicide and in what quantity and when. We haven't obviously gotten that because we just started communicating with them today, um, actually, so. Um, and then from there, we gave them thirty days from receipt of the notice, um, to provide a, um, replanting plan and, and a restoration plan for the property. That's where we are now, um, we are going to be providing, um, the bonds attorneys with information that we have. And that's where we are, I will say, I know there was some discussion and I, we need to keep this, um, again, at the process level. We did get some confirmation, I think everyone understood that the Board of Pesticide Control was involved on the state level, um, we did get some information from them today that, that I haven't had a full chance to review yet. But they did identify what we allege in our, our notice of violation, um, that there was the application of, of this herbicide, so. Um, that's moving forward, um, it is our hope that we would work with, um, the bonds to bring. Um, that's moving forward. Um, it is our hope that we would work with um the bonds to bring a resolution to this issue without going down further down the legal. Um, path. Um, you know, they, again, they have the right to appeal within fifteen days of the notice. Um, of their receipt of the notice. I'm not sure when that fifteen day period started because I just haven't had that receipt back yet. Um, which is commonplace, to be honest with you, when you send certified notices. Um, it takes sometimes weeks to get them back, so. Obviously, they do have it um now because their attorneys reached out to us yesterday. So we'll find out when they did receive the notice and we'll start ticking from that point. Um, I do expect them to work with us to um. Um, you know, bring a resolution to this, and I think we'll probably, that's my hope, that we'll do this through a consent agreement. Um, at which point you you folks are the ones that um. Approve that consent agreement that it for those that are around the board at the time, we had a consent agreement with Atlantic Avenue um. Property over there. Um, and that's how that worked. If they didn't enter into a consent agreement with this, we would take them to court then. Um, to district court. Um, again, it's our hope to to resolve this with them um. To everyone's satisfaction, and I did, I know there was some concern expressed last time when we. Um, about um. Whether or not the um herbicide, um, you know, left the property, um, if you will, and maybe got to um our our. Our park at Lake Beach. Um. And so there, again, I I did get some information um this afternoon from the State Board of Pesticide Control. I need to review it a little more. Um, I did reach out to them and ask them um. Um, for some kind of um their their. Opinion um on whether or not that herbicide did get to our property um based on the levels that they've identified. Currently on the property um and uh where we should go from there. So. They did reach back out to me after I requested that and said they um the state toxicologist that looks at this stuff will reach out to me tomorrow. Um, hopefully, um, and we can discuss this. And if there is any testing that we need to do potentially on our property, we'll certainly do that. Um, and try to move that forward. That's where we are, and I think it's really, this again was an update um on where we are in the process. I know I I have heard from people in the public. Um, have reached out to me. I've gotten emails. I've gotten phone calls. People have walked in thanking the town for for taking these steps and and being proactive. Um, but it's just important to remember, this is a, you know, it's a land use violation and there's a due process that everyone has um to go, you know, we have to go through that process. Um, nothing new for me. Um, going through a process like this, app, you know, dealing with an herbicide application, that is new for me, but um. It is something that we, you know, we. These, we deal with these kind of issues all the time when it comes to notice of violation and due process, and we just have. We're working on getting to that point where we can resolve this. Um, that's our hope. Any questions? Bill, I don't know if you have anything to share.
So do you want to shoot before we go?
No, I think Jeremy's covered it, except to say that just keep in mind that um it's an administrative process that can start it. Because the ordinance uh gives the current enforcement option, the authority and obligation to pursue this. It's not yet in your laps. Um, for any purpose. Uh, the political side of of um town government is specifically kept away from this stage at the moment because. It's a professional um activity in terms of gathering information and data. And then prosecuting it to the point where there is an outlandish consent agreement. Obviously, we had that discussion. Most likely, we'd start an executive session to talk about it. And at that level, it gets you. Um, so I think Jeremy's caution about we're only talking about sort of updating our process, which is really just started here. Um, and otherwise, it'd be best not to act in which. Not have any substantive discussion about what you feel about. At this point, we're not. We'll wait and see how it evolves.
Yes, uh, so. You issued the notice of violation on November twenty ninth. And you gave them five days to respond, is that correct?
I gave them five days to provide us information on what um herbicide. Was applied, who applied it, and what quantity and when. Um, and that's five days from their receipt of the notice. And what I mentioned was, I don't know yet when they technically received that notice because. I have not received the certified card back yet, you know, return receipt yet in the mail.
But you sent it on November twenty ninth, so it's probably fairly safe to say that they. Received it within a week or so. I'm just going to guess.
I I would say maybe ten, ten days. Up to, I mean, it's hard. I've seen these things bounce around and sometimes they don't claim certified for a period of time or it goes from to another address or that's. You know, it happens. Um, so, but yeah, generally, you're right, Tom.
Okay, um, and then today was the first time you worked with them?
Um, yesterday afternoon, I got an email from um the law firm representing the bonds.
And uh, the language in the NOV. A twenty-five-hundred-dollar-per-day violation, um.
Yeah.
This is for. Resolving it or for acknowledging it or for giving, providing the information you request?
It's it ultimately, and I mean, Bill, you can chime in, but from what I wrote in the ord, within in the violation that to bring resolution, once the resolution is. Is dealt with, and that means planting and restoring the site.
A second, Jeremy. Bill, all of our ordinance have, and those violations have a certainty per day, could you describe that so we can better understand it?
Yeah, this is one of four or five elements the law court says we have to put in these licenses. Um, it has to put the. Since it is an official administrative act of the town. We have to mention these daily uh possible fines. Um, nothing's been found yet. The. Actually, the town is without authority to issue a fine. The court has to issue fines. Unless we reach a consent agreement, and then that's how where fines get calculated, and that's how we did on the next gathering. So it's in a way, using that language in this document right now. Is really nothing more than putting the um alleged violator on notice of what their exposure is. Once it proceeds, but it's not starting yet.
You have a question, Sophie?
So, um, I I'm. Kind of piggybacking on what Tom was saying, I think it's really important that we keep very clear timeline here. And keep on top of it. So I'm really counting on you, Jeremy, to do that with Bill. Um, because it's it's going to be critical. The other thing is. Um, I wish that that the the notice of violation had been proofread before it was sent out. There's a bunch of typos, and I think when we stand that type of. Of communications, we need to have really, really clean and sharp. Um, so in the future, please prefer it or pass somebody else to prefer it, but I don't think it's a good image of the town. Who sent a notice of violation that is that has a type of offer.
Jeremy.
Point taken. I didn't see any of those. I did uh, I did put it through the process and I did have others review it, so. Point taken, and we'll look at it. We'll look at, make sure we do them.
Have a comment. Stephanie from your side?
Yep.
We're obviously in the preliminary stages of this thing. Appreciate the update, of course. And there's going to be more discussions about this, obviously, from your turn as it evolves. Can can you just give us uh, Jeremy and Bill? What you're expecting next? Um, you're going to continue to work with the bonds attorney or?
Yeah. Um, what am I expecting next or in the in in what I'm expecting out of this in in a. In a perfect world is if it plays out like I'm I'm hoping, and I think um the the Gormans are hoping. As well is is that the um. Is that the the trees that have been um alleged to have been had an herbicide application um. Defoliate them and kill them, um, and some are dying and some are already dead. Um, that they are removed, um, and the so it's a challenging site. There's a lot of ledge there and some slopes. Um, and that the soil um is removed as well. And that they replant the site. Um, and they get back the volume of trees that. Were removed and that the cleared canopy that was created is um restored. Um, and it's our expectation that that hap would happen this spring. Um.
Will there also be fines in addition to the remediation?
We're ahead of.
I think it will get into the weeds of.
Yeah.
Discussion that I thought I built, but we need to discuss that kind of.
Weakens our position. I thought about moments ago, I'm a little confused. There are all kinds of things I would like you to ask, but I feel like it's not appropriate. Right now because. Ultimately, we things are positioned to sit around and speculate about.
My my answer to that, I guess my answer to that question.
The the short answer is typically, excuse hypothetical, but this is usually a fine component. But the focus um after an act like this is on remediation and the plan that's going to work, and it takes a bit of time to do that because. It's a it's a multi-party discussion. Uh, it's.
And.
If they're involved, have to be involved. Experts have to be involved. Costs have to be estimated. It takes a bit of time to work something like this up, but. Typically, penalties are also part of the mix.
We're talking about truth, because there is no. Restoration plan that returns the site to the way it it was, so it's going to mean. To even start to say like, oh, it just comes from a green man and folks at all. I I worry about that kind of. Language because there is no undoing all of that damage in that particular. Site has to be above and beyond just replanting, but.
Yeah, I appreciate the thought.
Yeah, you're good. The other question is. Thank you, Bill. I know I know everybody is geared up on this because of the public news, it's big news. Um, it's very normal.
It's it's not how we work, we live around here. It's not how we.
Well, we we get to stay in that. We get it. We're all. Ready to scratch eyes out, but we're not quite at the point that we're being substantive. This is an update on the process. As they and and we'll be aware before we get to that, especially each one of us wants to have. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Andre. Anything else? Jeremy?
No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jeremy, um, thank you, Bill, again. Um, next item on our agenda was just an update on the uh. Jody's been sending out emails for some occasion about the stonewall financials and. Uh, your date and comparisons from the last, we started this about two years ago, where for every. Uh, monthly basis, we kind of get the revenue expenses and the bonus fluctuation because. Invoices come at different times, power at different times, et cetera, et cetera. But. What the good part of this analysis is shows of the comparison of the previous two years, including every month along the process and for example. Uh, my guests.
The owl can't wait to hear when you're.
Oh. Uh, what that, if you look at these financials, what I read in them, uh, is is that uh year to date. In revenue, we're behind about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, come year on year up, but that's significant. Because we passed a period by a month, I believe, on uh. On discounted season passes, and that's usually a a significant chunk. Obviously, you can see the previous years of our revenue. So it's something to monitor. We, the reserve, we get all bagged. We'll have to watch it. If we have a recession, um, but it has to play out. It will, it always plays out on. In function of weather, uh, function of less people's finances and a lot of other factors, but. Yeah, I said, it's enormous, like here, we'll be reviewing this every month. Uh, as we go into the winter months to keep keep monitoring it and and see how it plays out. But do you all have any questions on the data that's there? Okay, um, management reports, I drop.
Yes, so, um.
Please.
For those of you who are not aware, uh, there was a presentation by uh Elaine. Jones, who is the um lake keeper or one of the um. She organizes the lake keepers on Burn Island, uh, Queens Bay Harbor. And that was organized by Mike Scaly, who is one of the people that's helping me out with a future committee for Curtis Island. And Elaine came as um, you know, someone to give us ideas on, you know, how we might want to think about. You know, structuring how um, you know, Curtis Island is managed and. Also, how that facility is, you know, renovated over there or um restored. And so as a result of what Elaine gave us, there are a few things that um we've taken away to figure out. One of them, I discussed with the Historic Resources Committee tonight. I asked for some volunteers to help us research Curtis Island to come up with recommendations for. What period in time should that facility be restored to? Because that was really recommended by Elaine as an important part of what they did at Burn Island. So they settled on, I think it was in the nineteen fifties, and then restoring uh Burn Island in that period. And there was a a lot of different reasons why they picked that and a lot of research that was done to get to that. Era is what they were going to use to um. Peg is, you know, restoration and fit out of of the facilities there, so. A lot of, you know, really generous offers for help from the Historic Resources Committee to do that research and come up with some recommendations, which will be really helpful for. Figuring out how, you know, we proceed with any sort of um restoration that's done out at Curtis Island. I think also really good suggestions in terms of. You know, a friends of group and the relationship that has with the with the town. I think it was really inspiring for them to, everybody who read the presentation, to hear about. You know, friends of that was doing a lot of private fundraising, so they were very proud of the fact that they didn't, no, no tax dollars were spent. In, I think, half a million dollar renovation that was done. Out there, and there's, you know, similar work that had been done on Swans Island. I forget what that, it's called like Burt. Or something, Lighthouse out on Swans Island. It's very confusing. They, I mean, this all better, yeah. Anyway, so the Swans Island lighthouse keepers are going to come and do a similar. Talk just to give more ideas, but. I think long story short, um, we have a lot of really good energy here in Camden to. Start up some sort of friends of group to help out with the fundraising and. You know, potentially even the ongoing sort of management and maintenance of the facility. So I think that's really, really exciting and. Uh, we've got the, you know, the um. Recent former lake keepers involved in this effort as well, which is really nice to see too. Um, I was contacted by a gentleman from the D E P about uh potential water level order process. So they were petitioned or I I don't know if the petition has. Gone through and what's going to be done with it at this point, because this was. More than a week ago at this point that I was contacted by them. Um, so that has to do with the um property owners that are around them, that would be damned, they want uh. The water level to be at a certain um, certain set level. And so there's a process that you can go through the D E P to petition for water levels. So there's a number of people that can do that. There's a number of factors that they look at. Um, you know, a bunch of information, public hearing. So I think it'll be a good opportunity to work with the D E P as, you know, they'll be doing a lot of research. They'll be reaching out to a lot of people in the community. Um, and you know, what they come up with, I'm. I'm pretty confident it'll be pretty similar to what we're doing now, but, you know, it's the D E P kind of setting that limit that we need to work by. So I think it's a it's a great opportunity for the town and everybody involved to. Go through this process together. So we'll, we'll see how that plays out. There's, you know, a number of different choices the select board might want to make if if this does come to fruition, but. I just wanted to give everybody the heads up about that now, so that the first time you you hear about it isn't. An agenda item, a newspaper or the newspaper.
Very good. But to ask something, is the D E P going to come here and are there going to be a visit from the D E P?
Oh, yes.
Could you? I would love to just come and watch and learn from them, so if you could, when it's available.
Yeah, absolutely. And there's, you know, when, if this does happen. Like I said, there's, there's a bunch of different choices you might want to make. Um, and, you know. When I was talking with this gentleman, he he did say to me that an option for a town, and this is the one that we we always recommend and we prefer. Is that you adopt your own local ordinance specifying this. Um, so that'll be, that'll be something that, you know, you're probably all going to want to consider formally. And another thing, given the situation that we have with the relationship between releasing water from the lake and needing to open the gant, uh, gate on the Montgomery Dam is. If we're going to look at, if if D E P is going to look at that area.
Right.
As the owners of. The other dams on that system, would you like to petition them to look at the whole thing at once? So, you know, there there are a bunch of different considerations and choices that you might want to make. You know, if, if this happens, so. Again, heads up, something for you all to um, consider and if it, if it doesn't happen, you still have the ability to think about. And um. I don't wanna go too much consistently beyond just a, like a manager's report update, but. We have um, two bridge projects that we're working on with M T O T, so one of course is the Rossin Avenue Footbridge. And we've got a signed agreement with them where we're entering into a local, um. Locally funded uh, partnership and then the Main Street Bridge, which is. Well, fifty-fifty, it's a fifty-fifty funding partnership. So I think it would be good at some point in the next few meeting cycles to just give you an update on both of those and anywhere we stand in the framework. I gave an update to the McGonagall River Advisory Committee at their last meeting. Um, but I think there's a little bit more follow-up that would be prudent at this point in time, that would be good to come back to you all with. And. I also just ended up today, received correspondence from the um. President of the Coastal Children's Museum Board. They had been interested in looking at the Tanneray as a site to have the museum. And I think after some conversations with, um. You know, some, some neighbors in that area, um. They thought it would be, you know, it's probably not the right fit for them right now and they were a little, you know, they wanted to. Make sure that anything that they proposed was supported by the community and so. They thought, you know, the town having some sort of. Vision for how that site's going to be used and fits in with community desires was um, necessary for them to move forward with any plans on that site. So they just wanted to let me know that, you know, they're gonna consider other places.
What board, Ms. Stephanie?
I have nothing to report.
I guess that's gonna be the whole time. I won't mention it again. I just, the, the, the river, the Sagueno River Craft Committee met. Again, last week and it was really, as always, very fruitful and interesting conversation with lots of good ideas. Um, and in particular, the, the committee has um, tasked itself by creating a newsletter and. And encouraging anybody in the town Camden and beyond, by the way, to uh, send an email, the address, we have the address. But I just know it. Doesn't matter. Uh, send an email or call the town if you wanna join the, the emailing list. Cause we're gonna be emailing those newsletters. Uh, I don't know when exactly, but I think within the next two months, it seems like reasonable, you know. Uh, really, I encourage anyone and everyone to sign up. Um, and uh, I'm very encouraged by this progress and I can't wait to read the first newsletter. And that's it.
Can I just ask, now that's the river committee or the, who's like administering that? I worry about, um, I mean, I think it's great, I. I just wanna make sure it doesn't turn into, we haven't, we failed as a town to send the newsletter, so I just wanna. Yeah, it's clearly, I don't know, I think we can kinda understand what I'm saying, like.
I, I understand.
All town staffers versus to.
It's, it's, it's the community, it's the, it's the volunteers on the committee who came up with the idea. Who are coming up with the format with the frequency, with who's writing what. There's actually three people who have volunteered. To write the newsletter, um, and it's the newsletter of the committee, so it's, it's, I think it's a great opportunity. We discussed that length. Those types of commitments and how to make them in a way that they're not overwhelming. And that the committee can keep meeting the deadlines they set and the frequency they set. So, but again, it's the decision of the committee, uh, and I completely respect it and I support it and I think it's a great idea to have use that.
I'm not saying I don't. Uh, yes, um, the historic re, I think we missed the Historic Resources Committee meeting this afternoon, um. Relieved to hear the opera went there, so if you gave a part of it, but um. Uh, what they've been taught, got a little bit of an update from Will Addis, who's the chair of that, um, they had been. Working on um, whittling down sort of what the main things that they wanted to focus on. Are, um, and they once again want to revisit the um. Historic preservation ordinance that we had talked about um, before, which is um, in the comprehensive plan as they pointed out. Um, we went through the demolition ordinance process a couple of years ago. Part of the idea of that was. To be a little bit of a, a, a test case to see how much support there was for moving in that direction. That's just the demolition delay ordinance. That doesn't provide any um, real teeth that doesn't stop anybody from ultimately demolishing a building. Um, but that passed um, really overwhelmingly, um, and people continue to sort of be surprised that. Some of these buildings that are even on the national register, um, there's really, there's actually nothing that stops people from tearing them down. Um, so that's sort of a widespread misconception because we don't have a preservation ordinance. I'm not really weighing in. Um, either way, the, the preservation ordinances can take many forms. Uh, it's all, it's a local decision. So just because you've heard about a place somewhere in Virginia where you can paint your house because of the preservation ordinance. That's all, um, you know, it can be done differently in every place, so if you want this. The towns meet, so they um, were contemplating. Uh, whether it would be uh, appropriate to, to come to a select board meeting at some point, um, and. It's been a while since we've had like, you know, updates from committees. Yeah, and um. Right, just to, you know, give a, an overview of some of the things that they've worked on and any current focus areas. Um, along similar lines, the um, Rockport Pathways. Committee met and um, they are working on updating their master plan, um. They do a um, master plan for Rockport and a master plan for Camden. The last time Camden's was done was two thousand fifteen or something. They, what? And uh, that. Needs to have some changes. The original idea of the committee was um, pathways connectivity for pedestrians. And bikes between the two towns, um. So it might be good as they're, you know, kind of updating that plan of what the major things are that they should be working on. I think it might. Be good to come, have, have somebody come to the select board or the committee, come to the select board and talk about, um. You know, what they do every year, actually, they do, or every couple of years, they do a sidewalk survey to go around and identify what they consider to be. Hazards or opportunities for improvement, um, they provide those recommendations to the. Uh, public works director, I guess it is in most cases, um. So that, I think. You know, some, some members probably have never even met the, some of the pathways committee members or heard a presentation from the pathways. Committee, um, I think it'll be. That maybe if we could work on that, we need to put that on the agenda. Lots of talk about intersection that are dangerous. They watched our meetings about. Uh, they had lots of questions about um, sort of where we are in that M D O T process, what, you know, the speed study. Um, and also, you know, especially at the intersection by Montessori School, um. They have talked to lots of people in the community that have different experiences there and they just wanna. I, I felt like I was trying to answer a lot of questions about like, where are we in that? Process and is this like, we're gonna revisit this, you know, two sidewalks and all that, so. That is my.
Uh, I went to a mid-coast internet development company meeting uh, last week. Um, the grant, the seven million dollar grant that they applied for. Cushing Belmont and Moro will be uh, decided upon next month. The state, I believe, is a twenty million dollar pool, so. They're asking for a big chunk of it from mid-coast. Um, the board is considering um, looking for private investors uh, to build. Fiber networks in the underserved portions of Camden and Rockport. Because at this point, it does not look like uh, Camden and Rockport will qualify anytime soon. Um, we just, uh, we're not unserved or underserved as much as other locations in the state. Um, so if you know of any people who might be interested in private investment, there is some payback potential. Um, it might not be right on the scale of, of some of the more aggressive investments, but they think there could be. Um, that would be something that, you know, there's uh, M I D C board would love to hear.
Great, good, thank you. Um, just a couple of notes, one, I wasn't gonna say exactly, but we ended up getting them very well. I could see some of the excellent, all of them, in particular for parade. It was, I think it was a lot. Hunger for getting out there and doing something collectively with everybody. Uh, the twenty-two votes and that parade. Yes, they did a great job with that and there's a lot of people, they were really, really nice to feel that, I think, I think it was great. Uh, and plus there were events that occurred that I've heard, good, great things about. Uh, now, uh, they will be, this is our last meeting of calendar, two thousand twenty-two. And uh, next one, we're gonna be in January, February, I don't know if it's correct. So in the back, I would uh, request the, I mean, motion to adjourn.
So I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
I think by hands, thank you so much.
Happy Christmas, everyone.
Yes. Happy holidays.
Wow, three weeks without seeing you.